Hi Jim, how are you?
Good Julie, how are you?
I am good. Here comes Karen. I've got to try and tone out the ghost in the room. Yeah, I'm gonna be a ghost, oh well. Nothing like being washed out on Zoom.
Good to see you again.
Oh, good seeing you. Karen, you with us? Maybe not. And we've got Bill.
Everybody's jumping on.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Wow.
Okay. Good evening.
Hi Bill.
Hello.
Oh. Meeting's being recorded.
It is.
Yep.
Hi Cam.
Hello, how are you?
How are you?
Good.
So I'm going to be sharing your email tonight because when it gets converted to Word, we lose all the highlights.
Oh.
Yes, so I'm glad I just did a run through of that, so.
Okay.
Not formatting, but it's not as pretty as Word, but it's more appropriate.
Okay.
Recording.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Hey John.
Hey Jim, I see Bill, Kim. And Miss Julie. I can say Dave's here with us, with me. Loving his rain Jim, aren't you?
Yeah, we haven't done anything with hay in probably a month.
Yeah.
My hay looks like a disaster.
And the ground is so wet, it's not gonna be, it's not a good summer, no.
Nope.
No, I agree.
Have you gotten any in yet?
We've done about 1,000 squares and probably 20 rounds.
Okay, that's not too bad.
We do, we're about a third, a third of the way through it.
We got about 300 rounds and 1,000 squares, so we got a ways to go.
What's the weather coming? The rounds can get wet. Seriously?
Two weeks.
That's killing me.
Yeah. I mean, when we do rounddales at our place, it's hay that we wouldn't do for horses in the first place, it's strictly for the cows.
Yeah.
So, our horse hay, we've done 1,000 and we're waiting till conditions improve.
Good luck.
I know.
We're all in the same boat.
Yeah, I'm looking at this now.
The boat's the important part.
Yeah, it is, right, the floating.
The dog on the commission? Stop it.
No.
You have to listen to him.
Gail said she was gonna be here tonight, too.
Hey Bill.
Hey Karen.
Were you able to open that document? I sent it a second time.
Did you? I saw the haha, I didn't, I didn't get it, so it's probably my computer, but it's not much difference than the original, the one last week, is it?
Well, there's some, yeah, there's some changes.
Yep.
Okay.
But we're gonna, we're gonna put it on the screen though, so you should be able to see it.
Thanks.
Karen, I was explaining to Kim, one of the things that I discovered is the email might, did not save to my computer with all the highlights.
Oh.
So I'm gonna share the actual email, so that way we can see all the yellows, the reds, all the highlighted areas.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, so.
Good.
So. I don't know if that happened to anybody else who tried reading it, but.
Do you, do you want me to send it to you again as a Word document?
No, that's okay.
Okay, alright.
No, that's fine, yeah.
I opened with all the changes, so I didn't think that would be an issue, so.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
You can hear me, but the odd thing is?
Hi Elaine.
I can't bring it up. Okay, hold on. I have a label at the top of my screen, it says video preview. Do I X out of that? Cause I can't bring up, I can't bring up my controls. It says I join with video, oh, maybe, maybe. Now it says waiting, but can you see me?
We can see and hear you.
Yes.
I think I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to back out and go in again.
Alright.
I think.
Also try moving your cursor or your finger around.
Yeah, I did that.
Alright.
Now it's locked.
We can still hear you and see you, so.
Not anymore.
Oh, gone.
So on the screen now is tonight's meeting agenda, is that correct?
Right.
Where are we at here?
I have 7:29.
Yep.
We have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
Is it three?
Yes.
Okay.
We heard from Cheryl that she would not be able to make the meeting tonight.
And I also heard from Candy and I heard from Alan Johnson.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, alright, it's not just John, there's Dave is there too, but.
I believe we have 7:30. And I would like to call to order this meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission via Zoom Monday, July 12th, 2021, 7:30 PM. Seating of members, we will seat regular members, Kim Tester, Elaine Curley, Dave Miller, and myself, Jim Conway. And we will seat Bill Horgan for Alan Johnson. And now that the members are seated, I wanna address an issue before we really get into our meeting. And it, respectfully, John Cody, we need to have you not participate in discussions that the zoning commission are involved in. You were not a member of the zoning commission, you're an enforcement officer, and your duties are when we ask you a question or refer to you or ask you for enforcement issues. But from this meeting forward, when the zoning commission is in deliberation and discussing zoning issues, you need to refrain from participating.
Okay Jim, that's just fine, I'll save that for when it goes to the public comment.
Exactly, thank you.
I have no concern, but I kinda saw this coming anyway. Again, we can wait for the, my ZEO report, that'll be fine.
Yeah, exactly, thank you.
Yeah, no problem whatsoever.
Okay. With that cleared, approval of minutes, the June 14th public hearing, number one, and regular meetings, so let's do the public hearing first. If there are any changes or any issues with the public hearing, they're excellent minutes, they're very lengthy. I've read them myself two or three times.
I personally didn't see any adjustments to them.
I mean, it was a lengthy meeting, a lengthy public hearing, and I thought these minutes were excellent.
Mm-hmm.
I agree.
And if the seated members are good with the minutes of the public hearing, and there again, the chairman cannot, should not make a motion, I learned that as well. I would entertain a motion to approve.
This is Elaine, and I make a motion to approve the minutes of the public hearing dated June 14th, 2021, as printed.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Bill's second.
Moved and seconded on the public hearing. And the minutes of our regular meeting.
Do we need a vote? We need a vote Jim.
Oh, I'm sorry. All in favor of the minutes of the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
So that was unanimous?
Any opposed, none opposed, okay, sorry about that. Um. Now we have the minutes of our regular meeting. No rush.
I have a few things.
Okay.
Um. Dave Miller, I think left to go deliver a baby.
He did, he did.
Yeah, he did.
Thanks Jim, I was gonna bring that up, that wasn't as big.
So he was not there.
He was, he was missing in action.
That's right.
Do we wanna include the fact that he had to leave to deliver a calf? I think that would be pretty cool.
I think that's a good idea.
We certainly could.
Yeah.
It wasn't of his own choice.
No.
Exactly, nope. Very good.
On page three, I just thought we should have a close quote on the statement of use for Dennis McDonald. So underneath page three where it says statement of use, it would be one, two, third paragraph at the end, after it says and side patio, I think you should have a close quote.
I'm sorry, I'm not finding your page three, Jim.
Yep.
Third paragraph from the bottom?
No, under statement of use.
Yep.
Third paragraph down from that, one, two, three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think after side patio, it should be a close quote.
Side patio, okay.
Traffic. And then on page four, kind of in the middle, it says James Conway reminded that a decision, I would say reminded the the members or the commission.
Yep.
Okay.
Reminded the commission a decision.
Yeah.
Got that one.
Okay, and then page five. I have one, two, three, four, five, six paragraphs down, it says Mr. Horgan asked if the pole barn and house are one all structure, I think all one structure. Did you find that?
No.
It's not.
One, two.
Oh yeah, first sentence.
Six, yep. Six down from the top on page five. Mr. Horgan asked if the pole barn and house are, should be all one structure. Not one.
Interesting, I don't see that on my page five.
Really? Hmm.
Oh, I think it's on page four Jim, at the bottom paragraph, I have it in page four.
Really?
Oh.
Somehow the page has got.
That's interesting.
Yeah, isn't it?
Okay, I got it on page four.
Oh funny, no. Must be the way my printer does something, I don't know.
Are all, all one structure, got it.
All one structure.
Yep. Thank you.
And then the other, I had, oh. Do you want, do I need, should I have my reasons here, cause I was obscured by garbled speech? Does it, I mean, it's up to you, what do you think?
Where are you at?
I'm on, well, I don't know page now, so it's probably one, two, three, four down from where I was with that, the other one, it's, and we were giving our reasons.
Yeah.
And your vote.
To approve.
Contestant votes approved, but her reasons were obscured by garbled speech. It's sort of whatever you think I should do.
I think we're good.
Okay.
You don't know.
That's fine, okay. And then the only other thing I had was on what I considered the last page, and it was just, the DEP should all just be capitalized, there were two spots there, one was capitalized and then the other two weren't.
Right.
I mean, I'd be picky, but that's, I figured we're relating to an organization, so.
Yeah.
Under Francis Hodges.
Oh yeah, there's one that's, yep, you're right.
It was two.
Yep, it should be all caps, thank you.
There's two of them there, yep. Okay, that's it.
Alright, anything else on our minutes for the regular meeting? If not, entertain a motion to approve as amended.
This is Kim, I vote to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, June 14th, 2021, as amended.
Thank you, do I have a second?
This is Elaine, I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed to this? None?
That was unanimous, okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alright, that brings us to the crux. And Julie, what are you doing here?
I think she's reloading her.
Okay.
We'll be back.
Alright.
Sorry, just a little technical difficulty, bear with me for a minute. I didn't wanna load the email. So.
We can actually, I would like to start with what you folks saw in your packet. And that's the base, and then it had some adjustments to it, which is gonna be the email. And I think it would be good to start in the beginning and work our way through. And.
Okay. So, so we're going to the packet, the original packet?
Let's, let's just hit that to begin with. And everybody, did everybody get a chance to read through the reg change, the amendment for 3.10 that you received on Friday, Thursday, Friday?
As I said, Julie, if you want, I can always share my screen and put, put it up too, and then talk about it as we go. That's up to you.
No. I'm giving it another shot, so let's see.
Okay. Do you want me to give a history of what?
Well, what I, we asked everybody to start with what we received on Friday.
Alright.
Jim, Dave Miller here. I read, I read all the information we, we received on Friday.
Right.
Then I, when I got done work just before the meeting, I was looking at another one that I have not read yet.
Correct. Let's start with the, the original where Kim and Gail and myself started for the Friday one, and we made some, Gail made some adjustments to it. But this is kind of the format, this is the beginning of the whole thing. And basically, what Kim and Gail and myself, a little bit, Kim and Gail more, they rewrote, totally rewrote 3.10. The zoning regulate, regulations for non-conformities. And hopefully you all had a chance to read through it, and I'd like to see if you had any questions on the original amendment, the original plan. And then it'll be easier for us to go into the few things that were changed.
Original plan.
Yes, the one you received. The one you re- you received it Friday, and Kim sent an email and asking if you had the time to read through it and have it fresh in your minds for tonight. That's the original one.
Right.
Basically. Yep.
I, I read the original plan and I got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Is, I, I'm gonna kinda do it backwards, cause we start by the new definition of barn, which is the structures that are primarily committed to agricultural use. So if we use that definition, I don't know how we're gonna resolve the barn on Shelby's Road. Number one. Number two, I didn't realize that we were gonna even in, in this new regulations, I didn't know we were gonna address commercial buildings or non-conforming commercial buildings. That was brand new to me.
Exactly, because Gail and everybody rewrote all the 3.10. Anything that's non-conforming in this town is in this reg, instead of scattered all out throughout the book.
If I may, if I can give just a short synopsis. That's okay. Um, so when we were deciding and proposing to do the 25% expansion for a non-conforming barn, can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, alright. When I started going through, you know, we had come up with a nice short little piece that was gonna go in for 31017 at the end, which was the original plan. And then I went through the regulations, realized we had made the change for dwellings, the 25%. It was already, it was already in the regulation for the business commercial for 25%. And that, the business was mentioned four times in four different sections, 31011, 31013, 15, and 31016 of the regulations. So I realized that all three of those components of the town, in terms of the buildings that were referencing, were really saying the same thing. And it was scattered throughout the non-conformity section. So in that way, I thought it best to make it clear and to rewrite so that it made more sense and it was easy to find. Because we were saying the same thing for all three sections, and then as Jim is correct, that then it would be more cohesive, so that's why that came up, but it was already in the regulation, because we already allowed it. So it wasn't something new, it was just a replacement and rewording. So I just wanted to clarify that.
So as a goal, Kim, so you're saying structure and building in 3102 and 310A is just redundancy from the definitions? It's just confirming our definitions, applying it to the new regulation?
So, which one, could you say that again, and which one are you referring to?
Structures, buildings, and barn, three very separate things by definition.
Yeah.
But what you're doing with the non-conforming structures and non-conforming building, you're just driving home the point that they are different, barn too, they are different. But you're, again specifying that this new regulation applies to structures, buildings, and barns.
It's not structures, it's actually buildings and use and barns.
I see structures here in my 310-2.
Yes, because the final version, I took it out and put in dwellings.
Oh, okay, you know, you mean the one today.
Yep.
And the definition of barn was 20.17, that's still gonna be bed and breakfast, that 20.17. And barn is gonna be defined in this new regulation?
This is the suggested definition for barn.
Yeah, cause I looked up definitions for barn and it isn't there. And we referenced in this new document, barn is 20.17, but when you look up definitions, 20.17 is for B and Bs.
Oh yeah, no, no, it'll just all be renumbered.
Oh, alright, I'm not confused then, right.
Yep.
And you really could have combined, no, no, you separated them to be more specific. 10, 10.2 and 10.3, okay.
Right.
So anyway, it's, it's lengthy. We didn't anticipate it being this lengthy, but Kim and Gail came upon so many corrections that would pertain to this our shortened version, that they had to change quite a bit. The bottom line is we allow non-conforming houses to expand by 25% of the footprint. We, then we allowed the conforming portion of non-conforming barns to be used for whatever, the conforming portion. We've always said that the non-conforming portion he didn't think, we just thought it was a safety issue. So that led us to, there's many non-conforming, totally non-conforming barns. And we heard the cry, the outcry that, you know, if I can't do anything with it, I've gotta tear it down. So we figured we're two thirds of the way there. We amended to include non-conformities front setback only. So we- non-conformities front setback only, so we do not encroach upon a 30-foot setback to a neighbor's property. It's front setback, and you go, obviously, like the house, which is front setback, you go away or you go up. And we're asking that if it happens to be on a corner of two roads, that you can only go up, because if you went back, obviously, you're gonna be parallel to one of the roads. So if it's a corner, strictly corner lot, and you're right close, you still get allowed the 25% of your footprint, but it's vertical, no higher than the ridge line.
And I want to add in that, that's also to be consistent, that that can, cannot exceed 25% of that particular roof, primary roof surface, which the vertical expansion would go, so try and avoid some kind of big box on top of a house. Or a barn, you know, so it'd just be 25% on that side.
Listen, Bill, can you see this? When you talk about roof, if you make a roof really, really, really flat, you're reducing the square footage of the roof. Therefore, allowing you to increase the floor space a lot more. A steep pitch roof, 45-degree, 90, 12-inch pitch, is about as steep as you can go. But if you make it shallower, you can, with a, with a 45-inch pitch or a 45-degree pitch, you hit your head after a while, and you can't expand very much. But with a shallow pitch, you can expand right out to the bearing wall downstairs. So that doesn't, doesn't that invite? You know, we're not beauty contests, I'm looking for words. Doesn't that invite a much uglier change to a building that has a 12-inch pitch?
Well, thi- this is for existing, this is not new construction, you know, this is not like putting up a barn, it's existing, non-conforming, so.
If you take a barn that's totally non-conforming,
Yeah.
and it has a 12-inch pitch. Exceed the height of the existing ridge.
Right.
But if you make, if you swing that dormer out, the more you swing it out, the shallower the pitch gets, and the more floor space you can use. So you could, if the house is 30 by 40, with a, with a 45-degree pitch, you're limited to less than 30 by 40, because you bang into the rafters. But if you swing the roof way out shallow pitch, you can actually have a whole second floor wall under that roof, and you're, you're, you're lessening the square footage surface area of the actual shingled roof.
You can't, what we're proposing here is they cannot have a vertical expansion more than 25% of that side of the roof.
Well, that, that would be okay.
Yeah, so that, that's, that's the part that's added in, that, that wasn't in there before. So it.
But that 25% expansion could, a, a small barn, a small building, could use up lots and lots, it could use up the whole 25%, and to get that 25%, you could swing the roof up to almost a flat pitch, to a flat roof.
You can't do it on both sides, it's just.
It's obviously the back, and what we're doing here, Bill, is, is obviously, it's not going above the ridge line.
Yes.
And I think it's up to the applicant. If he wants a flat roof, it's no higher than the ridge line, go for it.
Front, front and back?
No, just the back. All this goes back.
Away from.
But even if the back is totally conforming, uh, non-conforming?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're not doing anything to the front of the building, because the front of the building is non-conforming.
Alright, so the 25% vertical.
Is in the back.
Okay, I, I may not say that. You have 25% footprint, limiting, limiting 25% increase in footprint.
Yep, expansion.
But do you have a, is that 25% in the back only? No, it is?
Yes.
It is, I didn't see that, okay.
Yes, it's in the back going up or out?
So the vertical can only be done in the back?
Exactly, yes.
Okay. So you still could, that's okay. I mean, you still could get a very shallow pitched roof back.
Oh yeah, I understand. But that's, as long as it doesn't show from the road, and it's not going to be higher than the existing ridge line, no one's gonna see it.
Yeah, well, some of our regulations, there's a word facade used, and facade by definition is not the front, so that lurks out in our regulations too.
Yeah, that has come up. The changing of the facade, that's in the historic adaptive reuse of historic barns. But it, we didn't use it when we did the expansion on non-conforming houses. Because that's already been, they, houses have been done.
Alright, so a totally non-conforming house can expand footprint 25%.
Yep.
Totally non-conforming barn, can't expand footprint at all, just vertical, no higher than the ridge, and all the expansion has to be in the back.
A totally non-conforming barn, as long as it's not on a corner lot.
Right.
Can go back. If it's a, a front setback on the middle of Town Line Road, you can go back 25%.
Okay.
Yeah. If it happens to be on the corner of Town Line and Keeler, then you go straight up.
I it's was wondering, the term adaptive reuse of barns, this is just, might be out of the Department of Redundancy Department, but I wondered if we should include, I have a definition of adapter of the reuse, is the process of repurposing buildings for viable new uses and modern functions, other than those originally intended to address present day needs. Reuse allows for buildings continued use and helps it ma- remain a viable community asset. Do you think adaptive reuse of barns, does that give liberty to legal sharpshooting to change it to adaptive reuse, or should we say redundantly, adaptive reuse of barns as a barn?
Well, if it's, I guess, if it's already a barn, you don't have to adapt to new use.
Well, I get, I just, you know, where, what merit do these definitions you have, as you can pull up now? By definition, online, I just said adaptive reuse is a process of repurposing buildings for viable new uses and modern functions, other than those originally intended to address present day needs. Reuse allows for buildings continued use and helps it maintain a viable community asset. So for protecting barns, I think, I think we should, like I say, out of the Department of Redundancy Department, I think we should say adaptive reuse of barns as a barn, that further cements what we're trying to protect.
Okay.
We've already let them go vertically, and if, if the back of it's conforming a little bit, they can go out. But to me, that.
Like, I understand, great.
I, that to me is not legal jargon.
So.
Adaptive reuse of a barn as a barn, I really.
Make your barn bigger.
Does the, having a definition, so that we can look up what barn is, isn't, does it, that, wouldn't that take care of it? So you wouldn't have to say it like that?
Well, maybe, but, you know, I'm just using the word adaptive reuse, forget barn. It just has definition, whether it's Merriam-Webster or whoever, is the process of repurposing buildings for viable new uses and modern functions, and blah, blah, blah. So, we, we really want to keep them as a barn. That's, you know, we, we don't want someone to put a new use and say, this is a modern barn. Now, we're gonna, you know, whatever they can do to change it. We're trying to protect barns.
I, I don't have a problem with that, Bill, I understand where you're going with it, and it's just a few extra words.
Yeah.
I, I think this, this adaptive reuse of a barn is not to continue using it as a place for animals or agriculture, it's to use it for other purposes.
Right.
So.
Or what it is currently, you know, what, what.
Well, you have a barn, a barn that used to house cattle and have hay in it, and now you're gonna put a living space in it. That's the purpose of it.
Yeah, but we're not allowing living space in a barn, it was new regulation, no kitchen, no, you know, so.
And I don't understand, I don't understand why we limit it to daytime use only, such as an office. I mean, the, if you're looking at it from a safety point of view, the traffic is higher from 8:00 in the morning to 5:00 in the afternoon, when it would be an office use, than it would be at night when someone's sleeping in there. So that, to say that you're doing it for safety, that's, that's just foolishness.
No, it's not, David. We don't want people sleeping, if you want to sit in your office on your computer at 10:00 at night, eight feet, six feet from the road, so be it. But if we start allowing apartments to go in to non-conforming structures that are on the highway, to me, that is not a safe scenario.
I think neither one of them is safe. If you're in the chair at your computer, you're just as likely, if the car hits your barn, to come to injuries as if you were sleeping.
Well, we have to decide where we're gonna draw the line.
Except if we don't allow some use.
Once you start talking about, I, I, I would presume that the original idea of safety came in for barns that were close to the road. So if we pull that out and say that it's no longer a problem, then what's the difference if you sleep there or sit there at your computer?
There's no way, shape, or form, we should, this commission should allow an apartment to go in a structure that's three to
Within the setback.
Edge of the road.
And how are you gonna police it?
Yeah, it can be done.
Good luck.
Good luck, thank you.
Uh, Gail has something.
Gail?
So, the adaptive reuse definition that, can you hear me alright?
Yes.
Okay, the adaptive reuse definition that Bill had is a good one, except for in a zoning context. What we're really doing is converting things that are barns to something else, and some other use. And that has to be a use that's compliant with zoning, so by just saying that it, it can be converted to a use that's permitted in zoning, but I, I think, listening to Jim, prohibiting the eating and sleeping kinds of uses, that is a kind of an adaptive reuse. Once that, once that area that was non-conforming is now usable, it's gotta be usable for a use that's permitted by zoning. It can't be any adaptive, new adaptive use, it can't be that broad under a zoning regulation. I mean, we have a residential district, if it's in a residential district, it's gotta be for a use that's permitted in a residential district, not to just revise it to a use, because it makes it more usable, it has to comply with zoning.
And, and also along those lines, as far as Roxbury and housing apartments, we are not cramped for space. There's no real need to create an apartment in a non-conforming portion of a building. Definitely not needed. You have many other options, and we have to use some common sense.
Well, the dep, you know, we don't have to bashful by using the example, because we had a public hearing last month with Grayden Carter's application. And he had, we could use that as an example, because that's an existing structure that's non-conforming, and we've written a regulation that says all he can do, he can't have kitchen, he can't have whatever, and all he can do is go, expand vertically in the back. That's clearly what we're allowing.
Yes.
Separate, we've separated that type of structure slash building from a, from a primary residence. We're not letting it convert to a residence, we're just, it can, it has to stay what it is. Right now, it's a barn that's not conforming, it's probably been the same use for the past 50 years as the garage. So, it's been non-conforming as a garage, I don't think there've been animals in that for a long time, or agriculture. So, we're allowing, we would, if this, if we rewrite this, we'd be allowing him to put a dormer in the back, not to exceed the volume by 25%, not to exceed the ridge line, and we're not, our regulation is not letting him live there, or make a residence or an apartment out of it.
Correct. Alright, now.
This is Elaine, may I ask why? Because according to what I've read, we're not changing the non-conforming area. This would allow, for example, a dormer to be put in, but why would he not be allowed to change use? Because now it's an office, right? Isn't that a change of use?
Yes, as I understand, right, we can't, they can change the use, but I wanted to bring up two points or two places in here that talks about special permit.
Yeah.
They would have to come before, so under, this is under the new one, and I think it's, Julie, if you can scroll a little bit, let me see, what do I got? Oh wait, 10.6, point six, or 31064. 31064, if we could just go up a little bit with the, on the page, no, there we go, whoops, oh, up and down. Little bit farther, 3.6, yeah, just, that's three at the bottom, and then just go to four. No.
Roll up, right?
Yeah, just scroll up, um, a little bit, just, you can take your cursor on the side on the right, in that bar, and just scroll up to It talks about adaptive reuse for barns and historic barns, and then partway down, it says, in all cases where historic barns are changed from barn use to other permitted uses within the relevant zone, whether throughout the thing, or in part, a grant of a special permit by the commission is required for that change. There we go, okay, thank you. So they'd have to come before the commission to, with, to get a special, for a special permit.
Thank you.
And then for on 31073, expansion, we have the option to request a, to do a special permit there too. So it actually gives us more leeway.
Is this a historic barn, this is Bill?
What would be the qualification to issue a special permit?
Uh, for the second one?
Yes.
Kind of depends on each individual location and situation, and what's, what's being, what's being asked, asked for by the applicant. I mean, we can make it just so that it's just always a special permit.
There, there are general standards in the zoning regulations for issuance of special permits, and there are standards such as, that it's harmonious with the neighborhood, doesn't cause a negative impact on, on neighboring uses. And you're allowed under the state statutes to use those general standards, or to apply specific standards. So for instance, in this situation where you have no eating or, or sleeping, that's a standard that says you can get a special permit for the use that you're gonna do, but you can't do that use. For historic barns, there's no such restriction right now, as I understand it.
Yeah, Bill, what was that regular, what was that regulation of ours?
Your regulations, and I don't have the regulations out, have a section with the standards for issuance of special permits.
Yeah, the one that addresses adjoining the neighborhood.
Yeah, it looks at harmony with the neighborhood.
Now, we are actually looking, Kim, are we, am I? Now, we are actually looking, Kim, are we, am I correct? We're looking at some of the revisions. Are we still on the original Friday document? We're all over the place.
On this, like, because I don't have any control, she's got there. I believe this is the, this is the one from today, I believe, that she's got up.
Okay, and so the commission has not seen this one until right at the moment.
Yeah, unless they looked, were able to.
Before 30.
Would have been tough, I think.
And there wasn't very many changes. We went back on the 25% a little bit. And what were some of the other changes that were different than what the commission read on Friday?
So the one on Friday, oh, so I think the only other thing that was moved. We were originally going to do it for the barns, right? It was the 25%, and then we talked about the use, and that was no eating, sleeping. And then that was all together. And so what we, Gail and I talked about was. Hi, somebody's talking. Is that Lance? So we talked about it and Gail suggested that it go under use, the section for use, so that anything, any discussion about use of a barn was together and not separated out. So that went, we just moved it to 31064.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Bill, just to put me at ease, where is that part of the new regulation that restricts the vertical only to the back? I've been looking for that.
That would be in the beginning. The original language we started out with and then it expanded. I don't know if Julie can, it's the same as we adopted for non-conforming houses. They can go back away from the non-conformity or they can go up by 25% of the footprint.
Yeah. So the 25% up could also be in the front then.
Well, we, it's, it's written in as going in the back.
That's, I'm, I'm looking, sorry, let me just take a minute to. It actually, you know, it doesn't, you're right. I don't think it really states that it has to be to the back.
It says within the dwelling's existing footprint. That's front, back, and sides. The footprint is a footprint. It doesn't have a front, back, or side limitation. It just has a footprint. So maybe we should have the.
Yeah.
Back.
Yep, I can see that. And actually, even, even in 31062,
Yeah.
it says limited right to expand a non-conforming barn building. And it's, blah, blah, blah. By either expanding back away from non-conforming conformity and/or vertically, but it doesn't say that the vertically has to be at the back. So I think, I think, to be clear, I think you're right.
Okay.
That's why we're talking about it.
Yeah, that would definitely.
Yep.
Well, do we have an issue if the expansion went up in the front as long as it doesn't increase the front going towards closer to the road, so to speak?
Well, a dormer wouldn't, no matter whether you have a little eyebrow dormer or a gable dormer or a flat roof. It wouldn't exceed the intrusion into the front segment.
No.
So you could, unless, and lurking in my mind, somewhere in that green book is facade. You know, that's, that's a word in our regulation somewhere. I don't know how it could apply to this.
It, it does. We have to look into that because we didn't address facade.
Right. Personally, you know, it's a personal thing. And that's not what we're writing regulations for. I would rather see it in the back. But if it's not written as a regulation, my personal interest can't affect knowing how I approve it, as if I were to approve it. So maybe we shouldn't.
And as, as a commission, would, would you have a problem if they put a dormer in the front?
This is where my beauty pageant judging comes in. I, I wouldn't mind a dormer in the front at all if it was a nice looking dormer, but.
Well, we can't, we can't do that.
No, a nice looking dormer to me, I mean, they make vanilla and chocolate ice cream because some people like vanilla and chocolate. So, you know, I can't, I can't make that decision.
That's, that's an issue we have to, if we had, we, if we think that putting a dormer in the front facing the street is an issue, then we have to write that in. If we don't have a problem with the dormer in the front, then obviously we let them have their choice.
I think we have, I think we have no choice. If, if the regulation exists within the footprint because the footprint is all encompassing.
We can change, we can write anything we want to write.
Yeah. Does anybody have any other opinions on that?
Well, I'm not the builder, but I would think it would be possible to possibly put in a dormer that could extend into the conformity.
I don't understand.
Well, depending on the architecture, if they bumped it out.
You mean, it's a non-conformity, is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah, they'd increase the non-conformity, right?
Well, we've already done, we're done that.
That would be outside the footprint.
Yeah, it would.
Okay.
Five roofline.
So they answered that.
Candle lever, that's all outside of the footprint.
Dave, do you have a comment on that?
Yeah, I, I think that having a dormer come into the non-conforming in the roadside, I have no problem from going away from the non-conformity. But to affect a visual point from the, from the street side, I don't think we want to go there.
Okay, I kind of agree. I agree. Everything should be toward the back. Towards the back.
What does that hurt? It doesn't hurt the neighbor, it doesn't hurt people going down the street. I don't towards the back, and I think that should be written in there. Do, I do understand what Bill is saying about the, the flat roof. If you do the flat roof away from, on, on the opposite from the roadside, the peak of the roof, it doesn't affect anybody except the furthest neighbor. That, that judgment is outside the setback anyway, so it doesn't matter. So I would be okay with a flat roof on the opposite of the roadside of the non-conformity. I, I do want to, in that, that will expand the square footage usage of the second story. But that's, I'm fine with that.
So, Kim, what do we got to change? Just any expansion has to go away from non-conformities, vertical or outward expansion.
Yeah, so we just have to change a couple.
Couple of words. Yep. Make a note.
So I have a question. So, you know, assuming, I'm, I'm going to assume that maybe that we, that we approve something like this tonight. Do I, maybe you have to ask, answer this. So do I, can this change be made and then, then the specifics of it, like tomorrow? Or does it, the specifics of it have to be done tonight?
I think we're good. And because we're going to reckon, I would like to recommend this, motion this to a public hearing. And until it gets posted, things can be tweaked and a couple of words aren't going to hurt.
Okay, I, I make sure that's okay.
The crux of the matter, we'd like to go to public hearing. And then we're not adopting this, we're not adopting this tonight. We can't adopt this till after our public hearing.
Right.
So we could put this, Bill, we could put the, everything in the back in tonight. And if we didn't word it quite right, we could tweak those words. But the gist of what we agree.
Whatever, whatever we post 10 days before the public hearing is what's got to be finalized.
Okay. As long as we, you know, we make a motion and agree to the, whatever changes tonight, then, and that those changes are made.
It sounds like it's only the one. And that's the expansion of the up, vertical expansion, no higher than ridgeline, going towards, away from the non-conformity. Everything goes away from the non-conformity.
Yep.
I think everything else is very well done.
Yeah, that protects the shallow pitch roof to the back because that wouldn't be seen also.
Exactly. Yep.
Jim, can I just make a correction? This has to be posted well in advance of 10 days before the public hearing because it has to go out to all the agencies. And they have to have it 35 days before the public hearing. So this language would have to be, at least in my hands, very soon.
Like tomorrow?
Well, tomorrow, it doesn't have to be tomorrow, but I would start worrying about posting this within a week or two.
Okay, we can do that.
I got another question on the regulations where the expansion of the non-conforming commercial use, that's written in there also?
Right. Yeah, that was just taken from our original regulations, the current ones that we have now, and.
The current regulations, it's special permit. So, so this will, this will make it so that all businesses can expand by 25%.
Yes, which they already can in the current regulation. And then it says.
Only under special permit, I believe.
Right, so definitely. So we, Gail and I talked, or somebody, Jim, or I don't remember any of them. One of us talked about having it all go through special permit. Gail?
Yes, okay, where there was already your regulations, already your regulations require us. Already your regulations require a special permit for the historic barns, change of use for the historic barns. This made a special permit applicable to to expansions because if there's an expansion, you're also going to be determining what the use is within that expanded area. The special permit for commercial, actually, I was surprised, I had forgotten that your regulations allowed expansion for commercial uses. I was thinking it was new, but evidently it's not. Maybe it would be a good idea to tack on here that it's done by special permit for the commercial uses. I think it should be added.
Yeah.
It was, it was there, so that's what I thought.
Yeah.
I think this, personally myself, I was not a fan of special permit. I thought it was cumbersome. And, but with all this going on, I have become more receptive to special permit. So the commission can review the change of use. We can review exactly what they want to do. We can check out the, the measurements. And if the applicant is really serious, one more step as far as special permit will not be an issue. And I think the scope of this amendment and the number of properties we're discussing should be by special permit.
So, Gail, my question then, you have, you have them up there? Do you have the copy?
What I have up on my screen is, I thought you were talking about the Friday version, but what's on my screen is the, the more recent version.
Right, that's, that's what I've got here in my.
Yeah, so I, I was a little confused about which one you were, you were working with.
This is yours, Kim, correct, version three?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it would go under that special permit requirement? Would that go under 31073?
Yeah, can, can, can we roll down to that? Okay.
So it says, or if applicable, a special permit, and Dave brought up that up before. Yeah, that would be better, right? Okay.
I, I think that's the way to go because we can have a better grasp on what's being.
Oh, well, that section, excuse me, that section just says architectural plans, including building elevations, that'll be submitted together with an application for a zoning permit or if applicable, a special permit. When we're not permitted, it would be through a zoning permit. So it could be if everything's done by special permit, now you don't need that zoning, zoning permit reference.
Oh, okay, so, but then architectural plans, building elevation submitted with an application for a special permit.
I was, all I was trying to say there was whichever permit is applicable, there should be plans to support it.
Got it. Okay. Good. Just want to keep track.
That discussion covers 3106 or 31073?
Yes.
Thank you. This is Elaine. I do have a question, just to confirmation. Other than barns under, oh, no, 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 sorry. 310.3, owner of a lot shall not own sufficient contiguous land to make conforming or nearly conforming, more conforming lot. So that, that identify the owner who may acquire the neighbor's property and, and want to do an expansion or a change? Is that what this is saying?
This, this is the current section of your regs? And it's, and it's unchanged except to add some, some other than language that, to make it clear. There were, just for the commission's edification, I guess, the regulations cover non-conforming uses, non-conforming buildings. And by the way, I don't think there is a definition for non-conforming building. I think it's a structure, but that's okay. And non-conforming lots. And the state statutes protect vested rights in non-conforming buildings and non-conforming uses to exactly what they were at the time the regulations were passed or changed. Non-conforming lots, almost every town has also added non-conforming lot protection and also non-performing lot restrictions. So that if somebody has a, you know, a one and a half acre piece and gets another one and a half acre piece that's vacant, they can't put another house on that. They would have to merge that together to make them. The whole idea being that the purpose of the non-conforming sections under the general, in Connecticut period is that non-conformity should be reduced as, as soon as the fair interest of the parties. That fair interest of the parties is what all of you are working with, is what makes sense for Roxbury. The amount of flexibility is up to your commission, truly.
Thank you.
All right. Again, I believe we have a very good regulation. It's been cleaned up, it's been worked over. I would like to see this go to public hearing for our next meeting in August to get public input. And then we can take it from there, but it just expands on. And then we can take it from there, but it just, um, expands on what we've done for houses and what we partially did for some of the conforming portions of barns. And I firmly believe that, listening to the public hearing a couple, a month ago, that the people in town want to be able to do something with their barns and, um, to get another use, adaptive reuse, and not see them fall in disrepair and torn down. So I think it's a good step, personally, but it's totally up to the commission. Uh, we do have to go to a public hearing, and we have time to listen, and so I would like to entertain a motion at this point to send this amendment, regulation, this is a whole new reg, amendment to public hearing for our August meeting.
Until September.
Gail, do we have to wait till September?
August.
I think you have to, you're gonna have to have the 35 days, uh, to go out to the, uh, neighboring regional planning agency, so yeah, um, based on, I don't know what, what date your meeting is, you could have a special meeting, but you'd have to, a little bit later in August.
Jim, technically, should we tag on corner lot, a new corner lot definition, because we use quarter lot, and there's no regulation? And we don't, we don't have a definition of corner lot, do we?
I believe we do.
Oh, okay.
I just have to.
The only, the only other thing that I was thinking of, Jim, before you, uh, vote on this, is on the definition of barn, uh, I think a good point was being made, because some of the barns that are old might have been created 100 years ago, and maybe a use has changed to garage or something before 1961.
Yes.
They're an old barn, so it may be that, that definition on, on what is, um, a barn, what, what, the definition for a barn right now is, um, gee, it's livestock, a building for livestock, and I think it says hay and a few other kinds of things, and we were thinking that we already have a definition of agriculture, so we should just include it. But I think your commission should consider, if you want that to be that it, that it was, um, originally created as a barn.
I think we have the agricultural use, um, further definition of barn.
But it says, it says committed to, but that may not be today, right?
Committed to agriculture, correct, no, they've all changed.
Yeah, it says Sorry, it says are, that, that means they're currently, and that was my, I had my hand raised, because I thought that before we made a motion, we should make, do something with that definition, because
I agree, I agree, I think it needs to say, uh, has been.
Oh, yes, instead of are, that just says has been.
And it evolved into something
Primarily committed to agricultural uses.
Yeah. Because every barn in Roxbury was built for an agricultural use, has since been changed.
How does everybody feel about that?
It's a great, great
Yeah. I'm good with that.
Dave?
So, all right, now back to our public hearing. Karen, you need to have this, you, we can't do it for August, we need to do it for September?
Um, if we stay on our normal schedule, yes.
Okay. No, if that's what we gotta do, that's what we gotta do.
Reg changes have always taken the two months to do.
Okay.
I'm gonna miss that meeting, just so you know.
Okay.
I'm gonna be on a retirement vacation.
Okay, with the changes, which were pretty simple, and we will get those to Karen tomorrow or the next day. And I would now like a motion to send this to public hearing for our September meeting.
That date would be September 13th.
Yeah.
This is Elaine. I moved to schedule, um, this, um, rewrite of section 3.10 non-conformity to a public meeting dated September 13th.
Do I have a second?
It'll be a public hearing.
Public hearing, sorry, did I not say that? Sorry.
Moved and seconded.
Can, can I just make one comment? Are we approving this for a public hearing, or?
We're sending this to public hearing, we won't approve anything till after the public hearing.
That's right.
So, Gil, how, how should that be worded?
The text, I think it's okay, uh, the text
Accepted for public hearing?
Yeah, the, the, the text as revised at this meeting.
Okay. Is that all right, Elaine?
Yeah, that's great. You want me to say it again?
If you could, that would be great, just so I can make sure I get it.
Sure.
Great.
I move to, uh, take the, uh, um, regulation 3.10
Proposed.
Proposed text of 3.10 non-conformity as, uh, with the text as amended, sending it to public hearing on the date of September 13th.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm tired.
Me too.
I think it's well done, as soon as we get the public input, then the commission will, um, at the regular portion of our meeting, approve or deny. And, uh, also, but anyway, we'll move forward. Moved and
We didn't have a second.
We didn't have a second. Bill seconded the first one. Bill, you want to second this one?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? David, you still with us?
Yep, I'm here, I'm aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I can't hear you real well.
Um, I, I would just like to thank, uh, Jim and, um, Gail for their help on this, and I also want to thank Karen for her patience, as I've seen these different drafts, and I'm sure you're pulling your hair out, but I just want to publicly thank you guys. Uh, and also, uh, you know, anyway, it's, it's been a group effort.
It's well, well done, and, uh, yeah. Now, I would like a motion to Julie, stick with us. Um, we have next, uh, item five, CEO report, John?
Oh, excellent, always biting my tongue there quite a while, but anyway. Hey, start off sparking really glad about this, that's awesome. But, uh, back to the CEO report, last week, I, uh, talked with Dennis, he came in, and, uh, we talked about his proposals I had last time, we ironed out pretty much all the issues that he had. I said, if he clarified things with, um, explanations and uses and exactly what he wanted, we could probably have no problem passing what he wanted. Unfortunately, I didn't get an application before this week, before the meeting, so that's still in limbo, but, um, we're on solid ground. Um, the big, um, elephant in the room is the Grayden Carter violation, as we know, that started on Christmas Eve. Uh, Jim, you reported that, and, uh, the violation that they built that dormer, cease and desist went out, we had a verbal agreement to take it down, Gail recalls that, they reneged on that, et cetera, et cetera. To the good part is, the other day, I got an email from Anna, she says they're gonna take it down, thank God, because this was getting ugly. Oh, confirm an interest of clearing the violation of the dorm, they've begun removal, she states it will be down by the 16th, which is this Friday. My problem with this is, as we know, Gail, when they said they would take it down by April 15th, we had that in writing, and we brought it to the commission for a vote, proceed with the court order, et cetera. You told me that was denied, and it was denied because Jim told you so. I don't understand how that could happen, overriding a, um, unanimous decision by the zoning commission, but anyway, to avoid the next fiasco, what I'm asking this commission to do is to stick by their guns, and in case this dormer does not come down by the 16th Friday, to follow through with our own regulation, 1815 penalties. Under that, it clearly states that if the offense is willful, the person convicted thereof shall be fined not less than $100, nor more than $500 each day such violation continues. I would love for you guys to make a motion to pass this in a contingency plan, in case they renege on what they said as such as they did before. Um, I think it's pretty simple, it's an insurance policy, they said they're gonna take it down, I would like to believe them, but we've heard that story before. So now, I would like to give this back to you guys to see what your rule is gonna be, I know the court order failed miserably, so now we have some teeth still in this game, but it's up to you guys.
I have a question, that's right to Gail, but is that, because it's in our regulations already, is it necessary that the zoning commission make a motion to, to do it, or something?
Well, first of all, um, uh, I agree with most of what John said. What happened here was, we prepared a, um, a consent agreement and talked to the attorney about it, and he thought the attorney who was Ken Slater, thought that the, um, that the owners I have background noise, is that, is that, where's that coming from? I thought that the, that the owners would, um, would consent to it, the April 15th, the original date that they had to comply was based on a January 15th order. And so the April 15th was already a concession, um, we were trying to get them to, to agree to it. The letter that is just, so it wasn't, um, yes, the attorney did report that they said they would do that, and then they hired another attorney and decided not to do that. So I'm just trying to make sure that the record is accurate, that April 15th was never their deadline, except for a verbal agreement that they would do that, with, through their attorney. The, the deadline was always way back, uh, 15, it was 15 days, let me just finish, it was 15 days, it was actually 10 days after the receipt of the order, which was January 16th, so it has been a very long time. The concern I have is that enforcement, uh, if, to get the fines, other than going through, um, a zoning enforcement officer's, uh, non-judicial I'm, I'm getting an echo, and I don't know, uh, why that is, let me let me try again, uh, the, uh, through the judicial process, the court has to award those, um, that, those fines, unless we, we use use a citation procedure, uh, the citation procedure, so the citation procedure allows, uh, an issuance of a citation order, and then there's a, a right to appeal that order. The court process, of which there's two, criminal and non-criminal, the typical way is non-criminal. Is, we go to court, we get an injunction, we ask for a fine. To do that, if the court hears that we're in the middle of putting together a regulation that could resolve it, it's very unlikely the court would enter a fine. So, that's, that's the, that's the part there, I have not, Jim and I have not decided that what this commission did should not be carried out. I am asking Jim to go into executive session with the commission, because this is an existing claim, and we should be able to get attorney's advice in an executive session to discuss it.
Okay, I understand that, Gil, but, um, again, just the, the lack of follow-through, whatever the name is, vote for the correction proceeding, how it was disregarded at someone's choice. It's rather disheartening, it shouldn't be disheartening for the entire commission itself. Um, so again, if we had to go into executive session to proceed, have some sort of leverage to, uh, get this compliance, that'd be fantastic, but, uh, otherwise, I don't really see why there'd be use for my job unless there's a, some sort of enforcement issue that's all through your reps.
Well, I think John, I think John does a great job, and enforcement is always about obtaining compliance, and there's lots of ways to do that. So, and I, we wouldn't be here, uh, with this kind of leverage if John hadn't issued the order and hadn't stayed with it, so I'm, I'm not at all critical of the job of the zoning enforcement officer on this, it's just that, to discuss, uh, discuss court matters and enforcement, we need to do an executive session and not in public session.
I, I agree, uh, I agree, Gil, thank you for, but, again, this was Jim's complaint that he brought up, so just to clarify, thanks.
So, Gail, are you suggesting that we go into executive session after this meeting?
At, at the end of this meeting, yes. It'll take a two-thirds vote of the commission, uh, to go into executive session, it can be attended by the members of the commission, and I would like to be invited in.
All right, with that being said, uh, we've done our CEO chairman's report, before we go into, we gotta finish our agenda. Chairman's report. I'm gonna throw something out there that, uh, really might be amusing, because it's totally different, but, um, First Selectman Barbara Henry asked if the zoning commission was going to take up the issue of legal sales of marijuana in Roxbury. And if we were going to regulate, then, or not allow sales of marijuana, this issue, the actual sales of marijuana doesn't take effect till next July. The use, legal use, takes effect, obviously, this July. So we have time to work on this, but, um, a lot of towns are jumping up and down and saying, oh, we gotta do something to prevent the sale of marijuana in our town. Washington had an article in today's paper, and the best part about that is I totally agree with what Jim Britton said, it's not a zoning issue. This should be dealt with by the Board of Selectmen and a town ordinance. So the whole town is involved in the decision-making process, uh, and not just the zoning commission. So I haven't had an opportunity to explain that to Barbara, but I brought it to you folks, if you folks think that the zoning commission should regulate the sales of marijuana, um, we'll look into it, but I personally think it should be done through the whole entire electorate, the town, and through an ordinance.
I remember years ago, when the first started with the growing of, um, of marijuana, and I remember we had a discussion about and I, it was about places that would, they, people would come to, you know, have big facilities, which our, our town can't support that anyway, but I think that's probably what we've decided to not worry about it, but I remember we had a long discussion about, um, just facilities, um, and the, and the use of the growing, um, but that's all, that's as far as we've gotten about that.
So, May, this is Elaine, may I clarify what you're saying, Kim, as we're in, there is no, um, condition that would allow for somebody to apply for growth of the product?
No, we, I don't think we, we didn't put any regulation in that prohibited it. I think it was just a long discussion that we had at the time when it was first allowed, that growers were allowed to grow from, for, uh, you know, health issues and whatnot.
The word, the word marijuana is not in our book.
No, it's not.
It's not in the book, and if it's not in the book, you can't do it.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, right.
And
Yeah.
But if the commission thinks that it's a zoning issue, then, but I, we'll get back to Barbara personally. Personally, I think it's, uh, an ordinance issue that the Board of Selectmen has to deal with through town meeting and hearings, and, uh, it's up to the whole town, and not my commission. And it's up to the whole town and not my commission.
Yeah.
Our commission.
I, I would think it would be important to hear from everyone in town, too.
Yeah. All right. I just had to bring it up. We got, there's plenty of time. It's not a, a big rush. But I wanted to bring that to the record. Communications, Karen? Apparently there's none.
There is a, let's see, I forgot to include it, but there is a forum coming up from Jocelyn.
Oh, right.
And I will get that information out. It's going to be up at South Farm, I think it's called.
Yeah.
And they're going to have refreshments and entertainment and then a program afterwards. So I will get that out. It just came in and I didn't have a chance to do that, but you'll see it as an email.
Okay, thank you. Now, we will adjourn this meeting, but I want to, I need a motion after adjournment.
No, no, no. No, 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 you're not going to, please don't adjourn the meeting. Just add executive session to discuss the Carter enforcement onto the agenda.
Okay. I would like a motion to add the Carter enforcement executive session to our agenda for the commission members only. And I would like to invite Gail McTaggart to join us. Commission members only and Gail McTaggart.
Jim, you're making the motion or calling for?
No, I'm asking for a motion. I can't make the motion.
Okay, motion by someone else. Okay, sorry.
This is Kim. I'll make the motion to add Carter enforcement issue to the agenda and invite members of the commission and Gail McTaggart.
So, John, are you going to?
This is Dave Miller.
Was there a second? I didn't hear a second.
Is it Dave Miller? I will second that motion.
Dave, okay.
Yes, David Miller seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. Text, excuse me, how do you want me to handle recording this? I am here, Julie.
It does not, it does not get recorded.
I can turn off, I can turn off the recording and I can turn off my sound.
Okay, but we do need to be able, we do need to be able to hear each other.
Right, so I need to keep the Zoom going.
Yeah, and I need anybody, I need anyone who's not invited in to, to not, to not participate and to not be within earshot. Get out.
Okay, can somebody contact me when they want me to come back in and I'll turn back on my sound? So.
Yep.
So who, how can we do that?
Karen.
I think, yeah, I have to go out too.
Yeah, but.
Karen won't be here either.
We can, we can invite Julie to, to stay in for purposes of starting and stopping, but there's no reason for her to. Yeah.
So does that, does that mean that John has to go too?
John, yeah, John does have to go. It's only for members.
Excuse me, Gail. Can executive session, there are two priorities we can call on. Can you explain those?
Yeah, executive sessions are for pending claims and litigation votes. And this is, this is, this is definitely a pending claim.
John, it's difficult to hear your.
I said, that's fine. I'll leave. I'm, I'm good with that. I'm sorry.
But then what about David?
We need, we need David. Yeah, okay.
I'm here.
This is not working.
Yeah.
It's not working.
Gail, do I have to come back in to record the last motion of the meeting or can Julie?
There's going to be, I don't know.
Actually, I can put Karen in the waiting room. Sorry, it's Julie.
Okay.
And then.
What does that mean, Julie?
Joseph. That means if you just hang out, I will put you back into the active meeting when they go back into session.
Okay. And, and would you text me and let me know about that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good enough.
Julie? Yep, so the Joseph is still listed as in attendance as well?
I'm going to, I'm looking to see who left. All right, Karen, I'm putting in the waiting room. Oh, wait, wait, I've got to put Elaine, it grabbed Elaine instead of Karen.
Can you see me?
Oh, you're there. Okay.
I, I, I don't know what happened, but I'm back in.
I see you.
Um, I don't see Joseph anymore.
Okay.
No, like he left.
Did we make him leave or did you leave on his own and come back in?
No, when we announced he had to leave, he left.
Okay.
Julie should confirm, Julie should confirm because she sees them first, but I don't see him.
I'm just seeing you and I'm going to pause the recording right now. So hold for one second.